Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining us at the Selectmen's Meeting for Monday, February 3rd, 2014. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible in its essence.
A reminder, nomination papers for the April 7th Annual Town Election are available in the Town Clerk's office. Signed and completed papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's office no later than February 18th. Also, the Board has voted to hold a special town meeting on Monday, February 24th, to address the incurrence of debt by the school district for the replacement of the MES roof. Please make an effort to attempt to attend the financial committee. To attend, the financial committee will be holding a public hearing on this matter on Wednesday, February 19th, at 7:00 PM. Please attend the public hearing with any questions you have. Representation from the school district will be available to answer any questions. And also, and the last is a reminder that the town offices will be closed on February 17th in observance of President's Day, and the Board's next meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th. Next, we have the approval of minutes and warrants for January 21st, 2014, at 7:00 PM. And all were present, with the exception of Ms. Dean, Ms. Dean Wing.
I make a motion to accept a minute for January 21st, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that. No in favor?
All right.
Aye. And we have warrants, anyone?
No warrants, Mrs. Dean.
Excellent. All right. Next, we have Marilyn Matthews, a Town Accountant.
Good evening. Hi.
Thank you.
I've given every member of the Board of Selectmen a copy of the compilation review that was performed by our accountants, Braver. And we, this is for your perusal, and we can discuss this one at a later date because it's going to take some time to go through and digest the figures. But what I'd like to say is that we did end fiscal '13 on a positive note. I don't know if everyone received the free cash certification, but it has been approved by the Department of Revenue. Don't spend it too fast, because as of this week, we are $44,000 in deficit for snow and ice. And, and we have this outside today.
Wednesday.
We have Wednesday, we have Sunday, so we are going to need some of that free cash, obviously, to fund the deficit. And in addition, we did fund an additional $20,000 this year for snow, well, a little bit more than 20,000, because we raised it from 32 to 60. I don't think anyone can predict the weather, and I think we need to be very, very prudent with that free cash that was served. We did receive our preliminary state aid figures for fiscal '15, and I just want to explain them. I did attach the charity sheet estimates and also the Chapter 70. We're being cut $26,000 on our Chapter 70. And the reason why, Millville only receives Chapter 70 funds for other districts.
North Park.
Children, North Park County and Tri-Tri County. We only have two students right now, as of the registration, as of October 1st. And that is what is used to calculate the Chapter 70.
Okay.
I put a call into the state, I called Helen right away, and I'm like, oh my, we just got caught $26,000. But that is the reason why. I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing else, you know, that we had maybe failed to file or whatever, but it's got nothing to do with that. It is the decrease in the number of students non-regional.
Okay.
That will in turn decrease the amount of tuition funds that we are budgeting, as long as we don't have any other surprises. And I think, you know, I think we've been very fiscally cautious over the years, but I think this Board is well aware of all the capital needs that we have. And it's going to be another tough budget year. If you go to the small packet, I put together the fiscal 2015 revenue projections, and as usual, I'm calling caution. I know the Board has many requests for expanded budgets. I know we have capital needs. We're just facing, I mean, we're facing a wall, and I guess it's going to be a year to year to year thing. We, the town of Millville only sees an increase of $90,000 a year, and that's on the back of the taxpayer, because that is your two and a half increase. That's it. There are no other funds. If the state doesn't do something to increase that unrestricted local aid and to increase the amount of Chapter 70 that they're sending to the school systems, there is no other money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, we have our stabilization fund, but that stabilization fund, you know you're going to need it for capital needs. You have your free cash, but as I said, we're $44,000 in deficit as of today, plus look outside and, you know, look at the weather forecasts for the next week. So I, I'm just trying to, you know, again, sound the warning that reasonable budgets, we've put together reasonable budgets in the past. I think, you know, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen has done a very good job putting together conservative budgets, but there's only so many places you can cut.
Correct.
And, you know, I mean, you're looking at an increase, like I said, in that vicinity, and there is no other available funds, other than what the remainder of free cash will be. We will have some overlay surplus this year, and your, your taxes, you're going to taxes.
How much are they all on? I don't know. I did that up a couple of years ago.
We did, yes. I'm going to figure it out. I, I think it's in the vicinity of about $75,000, but I'm not positive. And, you know, I mean, you're looking at motor vehicle excise receipts that continue to go down because cars are aging. And I know people are riding cars, but not as rapidly as they were. We hope that that trend does reverse itself, but we, you know, we follow this very closely. I track the revenues very closely, and there's just, I mean, you have it in front of you. This, this is it. This is the budget.
Yep.
Investment income is pathetic, absolutely pathetic, and it's, I mean, I'm sure you all see it in your own accounts.
Yep.
We're getting .25% on some accounts, on most accounts. They're, the banks are not paying. We, as a town, cannot be speculative. We cannot invest in, and, and, thank God, thank God, we cannot invest in any, anything other than solid bank. And that's, that's probably, I do have a graph.
Yeah, I saw.
It just shows you the free cash and the stabilization, fiscal 1985 through 2013. And it's kind of interesting, you see that the free cash hit a high in 2000, 2001, 2002. And that is because the state started helping with more state aid. So therefore, we were able to save more money to put into stabilization. And then, when you have to use it to fund your budgets, we've been staying pretty steady since 2008, and we have been putting money in stabilization the last few years. You need to have a stabilization fund. Back in 19, 1985 through 1991, you had zip all, you had nothing. You did not have a dollar in stabilization, and you had negative free cash. Not a good thing. At least we've turned the corner on that, but these are points that I think are very important for everybody to know.
Yeah.
And the only thing we can do is continue to be conservative, and I know, I know the Board will. I would like to address one issue that I guess there's been some question about. We, Town Meeting authorized the purchase of a new highway vehicle.
Yes.
And Town Meeting also approved the funding source as borrowing. Well, we did purchase the truck in December, and Massachusetts finance law is not like your home checking account. Once Town Meeting, the day after Town Meeting approved that truck, we could have gone out and bought that truck, because Town Meeting is the one that says, you can buy that truck. Financing, okay, is another story. You do not have to finance that truck, which is borrowing, until June 30th. What I am going to approach the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to ask if they will put the article on Town Meeting not to borrow, to actually finance it out of either overlay surplus or out of any remaining free cash.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, the financing costs are going to be anywhere between $3,000 and $4,500. You can't tell me, anyone sitting on this Board, that you can't use that $4,500 for some other department. Why pay interest when we're making $1.20 on the money? That's ridiculous.
Mm-hmm.
But at the time, we were hoping that maybe, you know, interest rates would start going up, so that if we locked in on a good rate to borrow and we were getting a decent rate of return, it would work.
Right.
But it, it's not. But if Town Meeting turns it down, we will borrow, and we have met the duties of financing that truck.
Okay.
I will say, I've been doing this job for 33 years, and this is the way most towns do. They pay out of operating cash.
Okay.
But you do have to borrow before year end, if you don't revoke the financing sources. I just wanted to clear that up, because I think people are confused, how did, you know, how did we do this? Town Meeting is the one that said, you go buy a truck. And that's what we did. And now, we will see if Town Meeting will change their mind about financing it, and if not, we will just borrow it. End of story.
Okay. Makes sense.
I don't know what else. Any other questions?
I have nothing about that.
And like I said, at a later meeting, I'd be glad to come back and discuss what's in the compilation, because again, you get, we operate on a day-to-day basis, on a cash basis. All cities and towns do. When the compilation and audit reports are put together, they go from a cash basis to an accrual basis to a GAAP basis, and that's what is in these reports. So some of these figures, you're going to look and say, really? And it's only because it is being put together on that type of GAAP scenario, which is the way that they need to report.
Okay.
GAAP is generally accepted accounting principles.
Wow, thank you. Yeah.
Marilyn, you'll be submitting the article? The Board's responsibility.
Well, we'll submit it, because she's going to recommend what it should, what it should read, and we'll submit.
And again, if Town Meeting says no, which is Town Meeting's prerogative, they're the ones that drive everything that we do. We don't decide, Town Meeting decides. And if Town Meeting says no, then we go ahead with borrowing. I just think it's absolutely ludicrous to waste $4,000. I'm sorry, I...
I'm with you.
That's why we...
$4,000 could be somebody's operating budget or whatever. I, I just think it's crazy.
Well, that's, $4,000's a lot in our budget.
It's a lot of, yes, it is, in a small budget like this. I mean, $4,000 in a $60 million budget is nothing. But when you're dealing with a budget that is this tight, $4,000 is a lot of money, and it deserves a second look. And luckily, we can do that second look. Again, a lot of creative financing goes on in cities and towns. I mean, I did this for 22 years in Dellingham, and it wasn't a $59,000 truck, trust me. I mean, these were million-dollar projects that, when interest rates were very low on our return, we actually did fund some of them out of operating cash for a few months to see where the bond market was going. It was always to the town's advantage, and that's, that's what I did.
Okay.
So, just so everybody understands that. All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a question?
Yep.
Marilyn, the Valenti, page 10 of my year's report.
Yeah.
It says, a number of here problems, general fund, fund balance, it's called, and it's fine, it's $636,000, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Now, do you have free cash in your nick, three hundred, four hundred, nine hundred? Is the shift, is the difference between the 300 and 636 available, not available?
No, six, the 636,000 is undesignedated fund balance, but your undesignedated fund balance is not your free cash. You have to subtract out your overlays and any other items that have not been funded, if you have a snow and ice deficit. This all comes off of the undesignedated fund balance. That becomes pure free cash.
And this is of June?
Yes. Well, yeah, your free cash is as of June also.
As of, yeah.
Yes, yeah. When free, when...
Lots of...
How much were you actually done?
295,000 was certified. But like I said, look outside. We're running the deficit already.
Okay. It comes down fast, within 48 hours.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Next, we have the Finance Committee. We're, we're ready for the finance. Come on up. Good evening.
How am I? I'm good, I think. This being my first budget season, putting this together, take it a little bit slow. But our committee's been meeting in the past several weeks, and we're going to meet every Wednesday now between, for the next two months, to put together a budget package for the next fiscal year. Totally, I'm a Town Accountant, on where we're at with the budget, being very, very tight on it. The bigger concern, though, is what you mentioned about the capital, the capital. It's been put off for several years, a lot of different projects. I think we're at the point where we can't put off a lot of this for too much longer. And the question now becomes, what is the best way for the town to go forward to fund some of these projects? I don't think we're going to be able to fund them all in one fiscal year, but what's the best way to look at every one of these projects, find out which ones are the priorities, and then see which, how much money we've got left? The free cash looks inviting, but it'll go very quickly. The snowplow, we mentioned, that's going to grow, I think, I would say over $100,000 before this year, is what, in terms of the budget, because of the season. We've got quite a list ahead of us, and I don't have prices for everything yet, but what we've been looking at right now is, we're doing the study on the town hall, and I know part of that list is going to come back and is going to say things you must do.
Right.
We're going to have to be prepared to figure out how we're going to handle the must-dos on that. We still have the septic system at the town library ahead of us. I talked to the police chief, his police cars, he wants to stagger the buys, and right now, he's got one this year that he's looking to replace on that. He also told me about a match, a grant for dethree layers, and radio's 5% on 25, it's not that much, but it's still out there. I also remember the Board mentioning a public safety study for new build, for new fire station, looking to do, so that's on our list. I know the animal control needs a new vehicle as well, there. I'm not sure what the highway department needs, I'm not sure about technology refresh right now, what we need there. But we also have a whole lot at the elementary school that we need to look at. We've got the roof, obviously, the heating oil tank, whatever water system repairs still need to be made, the floor repair, and there's, I know of, a pavement repair that's out there. So that list is growing as well, so my recommendation is to take the budget, before we make decisions on any one of these projects, see where we're at from fiscal perspective, and see what's the best way to go forward. The dump truck, I was the one to kind of question that, right? And my first thought was, well, and I didn't understand the way the Town Meeting worked, if the Town Meeting voted in that direction. But my thought was, and I'm glad that we can make it different, we can relook at that in some way now, because that takes into account putting all of our requirements on the table, see what's the best way to handle that. And I'd, and I'd like to work with them, and see if we can find the best possible solution to do that, but in terms of not only the dump truck, but the rest of the year.
Okay.
What time does your committee need on Monday, Saturday?
Set up here.
Are they going to be televised at all?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that process works, to be honest with you.
I personally think that if we're going to start the budget seasons, and I know the Board has talked about this before, I think it should be televised on the budget seasons. And it's very important that the public of Millville gets educated exactly what's going on and what kind of money we have to play with, and what the Board and the people are up against. I think it's a good working tool for the town, and I think the Board should see if we can get that thing televised while they're in budget season.
Well, at the minimum, I think that the joint meetings we're going to have should be televised. The public hearing on the elementary school roof, be televised. So, so Joe, would you mind bringing that to your next cable meeting, to see if Jesse and Timmy would be with you?
That creates a transparency, good government across the board on that.
But I think there's plenty of ways to get it out there, to let people know that if they don't have cable, that we do upload to YouTube, and they can watch it that, in that manner, so...
There's also another item out there, I think is coming through, Joe, you can open it, it's the high school roof.
Right.
On that, we're going to have to determine how that, how that's going to be funded.
That's, that funding, the school committee's taking it...
No, but that will come back on us?
That will.
Yeah, it does.
The school committee will, the school will issue the bond. However, it will then be an assessment every year, one at Town Millville, for the full amount of payment.
So that's something we could value for.
Absolutely.
Along with the elementary school roof, you'd like if that passes.
The elementary school is all on us. The high school will be the 20%.
If the people vote to go with that. Well, that's what I just said, if they go on it. But that's also a double whammy, too.
Well, that's the other thing we got to look at, because these people in Millville, some of them have sit on fixed incomes and losing their house, losing their job, so, you know...
The high school's already a go.
Yeah.
That's, that's already, it's the vote.
That's what I was saying, the vote, the people could, it could go either way, depends on the people, you know, what they can afford. I mean, it's like anything that we do here with these budgets.
The double jeopardy of it, though, is if you don't vote, you lose the 57%.
I have more faith in them, John. They're going to do what's right.
I'm not, I'm not talking about faith, I'm just saying...
Because in the end, it's going to look like this.
I think what it needs, what it needs to be is, there needs to be a little bit of education to the people, so they have an understanding of what would happen if they, yes, what happens if they say no. And like I said, they need to be edu, some people need to be, understand what can happen.
I know the school committee's going to be available at the hearing and at the town meeting to answer questions.
Town, Town Leeship, several generations ago, took a lot of effort to bring that building to fruition. You know, it's up to our generation now to protect that investment in the future, and find a way we can do it, and still take care of all the rest of the town business at the same time.
Yep.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Corvello's point with respect specifically to the elementary school, a lot of the items that we had been discussing, especially at the school committee meeting that took place back in October, I think you were present, Selectmen, Reposa, and Wing were there, we had some discussion about those items, and the school committee was, was very frank with us and said they, you know, their priority was the curriculum and the teachers and, you know, doing the best for the academics, for the children. It wasn't the facilities. So a number of the issues actually aren't even capital items. They're items that, if not, you know, if neglected, could potentially turn into capital items. Or perhaps they are capital items that the district hasn't gotten a couple of different estimates on. I'm looking for guidance from the Finance Committee and Selectmen as to how you'd like to proceed on those items. And just to throw a couple out at you, one is the floor.
Right.
We've gotten one estimate from the district, which advises we need a completely new floor. We've heard, you know, other, otherwise, from the Board of Health. Whose responsibility is it to work with the vendor, to get additional estimates? Another question I throw out to you is the, the oil tank, the underground oil tank. We've heard that it's aging, it's, it should be replaced soon. My understanding is that there are two different tests, one's a vacuum test and one's a pressure test, that really gives you a solid reading. In my conversations with the custodian, neither of those tests have been done. Whose responsibility is it to see that those tests are done? In the past, it was always the district or the custodial staff. I guess my understanding from the superintendent is because of lack of funding and staff, they're not taking care of those items now. So I guess I just am looking for some guidance. I don't want to see anything, you know, missed. I don't want to see anything catastrophic happen up at that building because somebody missed something. So I just need to know how, and while the school committee is here, perhaps we can, you know, pick their brain, but...
As to whose authority is, I really, I don't know on that. All I do know is that I think that the permit, I think, stipulates the testing that needs to be done on a regular basis, but I think DEP or EPA mandates the frequency, the tightness tests and the vacuum test on there, and having a VITR system at work in property. I'm not sure what the, what the condition of that is, but it could snowball easily and having a regulatory problem by not doing these tests, too, especially if we find the tank is leaking, or doesn't really need to be pulled, because it beyond its useful life. I'm not even sure.
Sometimes they don't pull it. What they do, in my past experience, is they pump the tank out.
Right.
They put another tank in, they pipe off of that new tank, and they take the old tank out, they pump it out, they wash the inside of it, okay?
Fill it with sand.
And then they fill it with sand.
Yeah.
And they leave it there.
That's if they find that it's tight and it hasn't leaked during the snow.
All it doesn't do is not leak, and all they do is they pump it out, they clean it, and they just fill it with sand, and that's it, it's done.
Is the plan to put an above-ground storage tank there at some point?
I, I don't know.
As of now, there is no plan. We would need to get estimates, I guess that's part of the problem, is we need to get somebody up there to review the situation and advise us. And I'm the first to admit that nowhere on my resume is there any indication that I have any experience in engineering, or, you know, any of this technical stuff, so.
Does the state do, no. They oversee the testing.
I used to have.
Did you have to have a company like Clean Hivers come in and do?
No, I had a guy from the state that came in, that worked for the state, and he checked our vessels, our pressure vessels, and he worked for the state.
Yeah, but he didn't actually do the testing?
Yeah.
Really? I never, we always had to get an outside firm to come in and do the testing, and then DEP would oversee the test or review the results.
I think the avenue you picked, Helen, on that, from past experience, call your insurance company, our insurance company, they might be able to give us an avenue, or a company that does do it, that's a start.
I might add that DEP was at the school today. DEP, section leader, or whatever, recommended a vacuum test, that is the extent of it.
So are we, are we heading down a path where the town itself is going to need to look at the possibility of hiring a facility engineer to handle a lot of these items if the district itself doesn't have the funding or capability to do the same?
Oh, that would be on my grid, too, I think.
That'd be something else to add to the budget. A big nut.
Well, I know a while ago, we had talked about, you know, engineer and maintenance facilities, and we did bring it up with the superintendent, and no disrespect to him, but he's an interim, and he can say what he wants, but the next person along, and the next school committee along is gonna set the precedent. So I think that, you know, we're gonna need to note from them, in writing, I would like to say from the school district, what they are either are covering or are covering for both towns, in regards to the JFK Maloney complex and our school, that the town is responsible for. And then it's clear, because I know Mr. Chamberlain was at that meeting, and he was kinda blown out of the water that there wasn't a maintenance person kinda for the district that, you know, oversaw these things, and, you know, and after the meeting, he says, you know, can we get a joint person, can we do something? I don't know, I know in the past, we talked about this building, I said, you know, some of the larger communities, the Franklin, the Milfords, and those, they have someone on staff, is it something that we can, you know, contract with them, to have them come down and to give us guidance and do that, rather than, these big firms are gonna charge you top dollar, where Milfords and Franklins are gonna sublet their people out for maybe X number of days a year for so much money, it might be cheaper, and they're probably more knowledgeable in what needs to be done in their community. So I think there's a lot of avenues to go, but I'm not sure which one is right, but I'd like to see them, but I think a clear list of what, you know, what we are responsible for within district, like you said, to make sure it's done before something happens and it's gonna cost us more. And I know the regional agreement, the district agreement is specific as to, because if we just replace a portion of the floor, it's under the threshold.
Correct.
Whereas if we replace the whole floor, then we are responsible, so it's, not that I don't trust the opinions, but I'd like to have someone in there to say, a contractor or two or three, their recommendations, do we replace the whole floor, or is it okay to replace partial of it? I think we need to ask those questions, and I think we need to get those people in.
What was, the price for that floor was like twenty-five thousand, wasn't it? Something crazy?
Yeah.
The threshold is what, twenty-five?
And the health department says that we can patch the floor, so why don't we just patch the floor?
Well, not just the health department, but I think someone who deals with flooring, and, you know, because you don't wanna patch it, and then ten years from now, it'll be capping again. You know, if there's a clear cut line, I don't know anything about flooring, but I'm guessing you can probably make a clear cut line at some point where it's good to patch and replace.
Typically, we don't know what the life of that type of floor is, right? Is it a twenty-year floor, twenty-five-year floor? It looks like the two pictures of the concrete, it is shifted, it wasn't a floor itself, it was the concrete. But you also probably got to take a look at, compare and contrast, you get some repair costs for it, and then you can look at what those numbers are compared to what replacing the entire floor costs, it might be more cost beneficial to do the entire floor. Well, I don't know what the repair costs are.
But I think we need to have someone up.
You gotta look at that.
No offense to the Board of Health. Or, whatever, I mean, we had, was that floor contracted from New Jersey?
Yeah.
Because it was the type of floor, and they said this is how much it costs, yeah, let's get some local.
Yeah, rewind back to what Marilyn was saying, we can't afford to waste four thousand dollars on financing a truck, how, how can we spend twenty-five thousand on a floor when we haven't even investigated to see if we can fix it?
Exactly, exactly.
For a lot less. We have to, and we owe it to all the taxpayers to do it, the most fiscally responsible way we can do it.
So the action is to get another contractor in there.
I would, yeah, they're not the only from New Jersey, I know there's epoxy floors right here in this state, because I do kitchens all the time, commercial kitchens, and there's local people from Massachusetts that do it, we don't need somebody from New Jersey.
Maybe we can get someone up there during COVID-19. Me?
Well, I don't.
That's my question. I think, I think because the school, that Mr. Davis put it back on us, saying that it needs to be replaced, we need to know, does it really need to be replaced? So I think that is on us, I think we do need to have a, I'm not waiting for them, I'm gonna, you know, they said they're not responsible, okay, fine, let's get our professional in, and let's get our second opinion or third opinion.
Because even if this new guy says, yeah, it does need to be completely, but at least we'll have another price to know if this firm from New Jersey is, you know.
Yeah, a couple prices. You're paying the mobilization cost to go to New Jersey.
No, they probably don't have a local guy, you can have a portion and kick the other portion, I think that's what's gonna happen.
So that's the direction we're heading, and I think between now and the budget's finalized, our board, Board of Selectmen, and all the rest of the boards need to work closely to come up with a budget there. It stays within our limits, but still gets the job, the town business done.
Nice, nice job.
Beyond the floor and cafeteria, kitchen, we need to deal with the paving, the repair.
I mean, the critical items, in my opinion, right now, are the water tank and the oil tank. Because either of them, you know, could go, I mean, we had the water tank refurbished, you know, several years ago, and we were told at the time, it could last five years, it could last ten, we don't know. We will certainly change the ANO rods, we've got Bob Ferrari, you know, right on top of the maintenance, but, you know, we need to plan, and the estimate for replacing that is over two hundred thousand. So, I mean, we've got to at least start thinking about that. And, you know, my concern is getting the proper testing done of the oil tank. But again, I, you know, I'm the first to admit, I know nothing about oil tanks, I mean, I can make phone calls and make arrangements to have people go up there, but they ask me questions I cannot answer. So, it seems kinda ridiculous to me to be doing this work, I.
Just wondering if Mr. Laurel, the facilities, can recommend someone?
Is it a facilities management offering company? I mean, there's like five different things, I mean, is there somebody who?
Kelly, Kelly from Finance, that's your line of work.
I guess I'm a committee, but, so, I guide you to all sorts of vendors, but if you wanna hire a facilities company, it's, it's possible.
Right. Well, that's, I like Jennifer's proposal is to solicit some other towns, the bigger towns that have their own facilities, engineers, you know, employed by the town.
Or maybe the ones that don't, could all get in, go in on it, and, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, there's no good answers here.
Retrain us.
Yeah, something.
That's a great idea, but, you know, where do you get started?
Right. Exactly.
Well, exactly. We start calling, we start calling some other boards of Selectmen and.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Has anyone considered contacting the company that provides the oil, to see if they can test the integrity of the tank?
They'll.
I think that's what he, who he, the head custodian today said, they, the company that provides the oil just did a test on it, and I can't recall the type of, a water test.
Yeah, the water test.
But it was, it wasn't a pressure test or a vacuum test, and I, my understanding.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the oil companies, most, I'd say ninety percent of the oil companies aren't gonna have a, the equipment to do the pressure tests, yeah.
It's fairly good news, though, after twenty years, all they could pull out was fifteen gallons of water. That's a good thing.
I do have one more suggestion, too, I think you could talk to, come to the partner Steve Neweller, your insurance company, you can talk to the partner Steve Neweller, this may fall under their realm, these tanks, it's possible.
That's what I said, they call an insurance company, because it falls under them, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what they kinda.
The insurance company is gonna have a couple people, like you said, they call to check the tanks and their fuselage tanks, or some of their pressure tanks, like air compressors, so they're gonna know who to call, and our insurance company might have a couple people that they, they use for that, because I believe it's all insured, so they're gonna have somebody to do a check and balance, so. I would call insurance company.
Make it maintenance department or list or something, suggestions.
If you have a problem with the insurance company, they have nobody, call me, and I'll find someone that's certified to do the vacuum and the pressure.
And I just wanna clarify that the reason why this, you know, is coming up now, is this is the first time that these issues haven't been addressed by the district. Up until recently, the process was always, they would provide us with a capital request form with three estimates attached, they would hand that over, and then we would, you know, do the bidding, or we'd put it out to bid, would give it to capital, whatever. But it seems that that process has changed.
I think in fairness, too, our, we've been paying the minimum contribution, where we used to always pay above, because things did get tight, so I'm sure their budget got tight in response to that, and so therefore, probably, they're taking care of the things they have to take care of, and then it's coming back onto us. So, though you don't give that extra, I mean, you're still paying in the end, and that's, I'm assuming just by attending some of their meetings and hearing discussions, it's probably because we don't do the, what is it called, the?
The additional?
The additional, yeah, the additional, I can just guess, I see heads shaking all over there.
Just the minimum contributions, the state sets that rate, and they set it for running and educating the kids.
Right.
They don't put into that, oh, you have to replace a floor or a frame like that, that stuff, doesn't get fun?
But unfortunately, the town's in the same predicament, we have had budget cuts, we're understaffed, and we really don't have the manpower to take on the additional work either. So, you know, something's gonna give somewhere. And I just call that to your attention during budget season, that whether it's hiring an outside vendor, or considering, you know, working with the school committee, paying the additional, and having them take that work back, or if you wanna hire another employee, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, it can't continue on the way it is.
We start reaching out to other towns and see.
Well, I remember Selectmen Wing did bring that up probably a year ago, and I did make a few phone calls.
Because I think Milford was hiring, it was in the beacon, so, I mean, there are communities that are hiring and getting them, and I can't imagine, I know, you know, some lines of work that, you know, a town will hire them, but they don't always have enough work for them, so to offset some costs, costs, they, you know, they do contract them out, so, it's something to look at.
It should be a retired, a retired person that did that volunteer, you know, and I also have some vendors that I've already mentioned before, and I just, I'm pretty much of a, you know, to do that.
Yep. Yeah, if that doesn't, and we, if we do have to hire somebody, like Kelly said, we can, hopefully, somebody that does it, is retired and still wants to work part-time, at a very low rate. But it would be fun.
We'll make it fun.
We'll make it as fun as possible. So, yeah, that, so. Well, we'll have to see what we get for a response. Any other?
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. Any other questions on capital expenses or finance? Okay, first public forum?
I don't know, we were invited here, and I didn't know if you had questions from us about the capital items or the.
Is there any more detail in one of those firms?
Because Helen, that email doesn't ask us to be there tonight, so we thought we were on the agenda of some sort.
It was just for the capital discussion?
Yeah, that's it.
Because you had any input, or?
Just because the floor and the roof was gonna be part of which we just spoke about, so.
Well, I can just speak to the floor momentarily, a lot of conversation has been around it. That started, I believe, from the Board of Health inspection, with Dave Stanley, who was working with Kim Schaefer-Hood, and it was a crack in the floor.
Right.
At that time, Schaefer-Hood and Dustin might have been up there, too, and Dave Stanley said, you just need to fill the crack, nobody would, because they were back and forth about estimates, nobody at that time, two years ago approximately, said they needed a new floor up there.
Right.
I spoke to Bobby Lox, who is the agent, who's on the Board of Health, who did the inspection recently, and he, nowhere did he say the floor needed to be replaced from this perspective of the Board of Health, but that is where it started with the crack in the floor, he seems to think it can be filled and be fine, we're not saying down the road, so I agree, you need more people's eyes on this, us, you know, five thousand dollars to fill a crack, and how you go about it are two different things in my eyes, too, so, I look to the town, look into, you know, more investigating of.
I think we have to look at when, when the initial, when the initial report or the suggestion was made, and what's in that report, our building inspector at the time, what was their comments and concerns, I think we need to go back to that spot.
And that's all up in the Board of Health office?
To see, and then go from there.
Yeah.
Sherry, people love that.
All right, yeah.
Do you have better ideas?
Yeah, okay.
Because I know at the time, he had, he was an active health inspector, doing a lot of visits around town, so, I think we need to take that, you know, look at, look at the actual report and see where it's going, what it happened.
And what the recommendations were at that time, or what they announced.
Does anybody have any pictures?
Well, we did have pictures.
We did have.
Yeah, right, right in there. The, John.
That was, yeah, last year, I think.
I just wanna take a quick.
But it was recently expected, it's hard to say the practice to be filled, that it's a quality replacement, and it's in this lab, and it's been before.
Do you think, do you think making arrangement with whoever's superintendent, that I can go up and take a look at this floor, so I can report back to the board, my, how I feel about, you know, how bad damaged this floor really is? Because what I'm seeing here is not a replacement of a floor, but.
We just need to.
I think, I, no, offend stuff, but I think we do, we do need a vendor at least to come in, not that I don't respect your.
I still wanna go up there and take a look at it, sorry.
But I think, no, no, I don't blame you for wanting to look at it, but I think we actually have to have a vendor to come in, so that, you know, we can't just say, well, we think it just needs this, I'd like someone in the business who is not employed or has vested interest says this.
Even a couple of issues, if they stop.
See that initial report again, I have a secret to that, there was a lot of that going around.
Can I ask Sherry to give us, dig that up for us?
I actually have copies of everything in my office. And I actually have a letter that they prepared within the past year, the Board of Health signed, indicating that they never asked for the floor to be replaced, only repaired. But, you know, I guess what happened was, the vendor said it was impossible to repair, so that's, that was the one and only estimate we received, and.
Yeah, but sometimes it's only because it's impossible for them to pay their bills, and they have to increase revenue.
We have March 1st, we're visiting our facilities, you, what are the dates, will you welcome to join us?
When's that gonna be, at night?
No, no, one, one of the things we're talking about doing is on March 1st, at least ten o'clock in the morning, we're inviting the, um, Selectmen and Ten Comms of Ball Town, Daniel from the, the town, Tom from the, uh, March 1st, we're gonna be throwing the elementary schools, Millville, Nelson, Woods and Blackstone.
Okay.
And then the following Saturday, March 8th, the middle and high school. So, you know, you wanna come along, or anyone who's listening, they can come.
Okay.
March 1st, elementary, March 8th, middle and high school. And you can ask questions like, let's see the floor, let's see the, you know, and any questions you've got about any of the issues, that's the time to do it. I mean, you can go anytime you want, but this is, this is a...
Well, you have to go through the superintendent's files.
No one does that.
But I'm just saying, you can't just go in.
I know that, no one does that.
In terms of visiting, yeah, you can't just pop in, but...
Well, we all know that, that it was protocol, yeah.
Yep, and other one was, you know, the parking lot, um, replacing the parking lot, repairing the parking lot, the walkways. I did get a cover memo from Dr. Perry asking if, um, our highway surveyor could help us with that. So, you know, I emailed Mr. Malali, seeking his help and guidance, but my question, I guess, is if I don't hear back from him, what would you like me to do? Would you like me to give it back to the superintendent and say, no, we can't help you? Or would you like me to, I mean, am I taking that on, too?
No.
Am I getting estimates on parking lots and walkways?
That's the engineer's, the highway department's job. I, I don't think you need to, uh, take on another task like that, Ellen, personally. Uh, let's see if we hear back...
Well, I mean, I don't know that that's his, that, I don't know for fact that that's his job, but, um, it's certainly not my position to tell him what his job is or what he's going to do, so...
Well, you can ask him and see if we get a response back, and go from there.
Snow and ice is part of his job description on that asphalt, so I would think that the potholes also would be...
He does fix potholes, I mean, all we can do is ask him, and he can give us a...
Man, I know, it's not a public way, or, so it wouldn't be chapter ninety, but... Other towns, I know the highway department takes care of the school parking lots.
Well, I mean, I know when I had the parking lot for this building done, it wasn't the highway surveyor, it was, I mean, I put that out to bid, I got the estimates because I was the facility manager, so usually it's...
Yeah.
The facility manager when it's a building.
Well, Brian's a pretty easygoing guy.
No, but he's very busy, that's the problem. He's...
No, I know.
He's got, he's got a lot going on, and...
All right, well, let's see what he can do to help us out. You got connections, don't you?
I, I can tell you, we have a question that we're...
Yeah.
Where does the, the public road end? And what you would consider our responsibility begin? Because if we look at it from a plowing perspective, Millville does Breathway, end up and around the loop for plowing and snow and salt, and that's where these potholes are.
Right.
So, I mean, I, actually, I was at a parent meeting a few months ago, when it was being discussed for cars parking in front of the building, and it was said, well, that's a fire lane. So I had raised the question, well, can we ask the town to paint the fire lane? But it became a discussion, is it the town, or is it the school? And I guess there's some uncertainty there on, on that loop around in front of the school. Does anyone know?
I guess the DOT would know exactly where the road ends.
I'm sure that...
You know, it was asked...
No, but, right, but on their map, it's gonna show the road ends right here.
Could, could it be with the gears?
And then it becomes...
I'm thinking it's probably at the gear, I'm guessing, and, but I'm, you know...
But the, yeah, but the...
Yeah, we can check the assessors' maps.
The roadmap is gonna, you know, the road ends here, now it's, now it's a school property, even though it's still the town property. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But with respect to, to painting, um, my understanding would be that it would be part of the district's responsibilities, an operating expense, yeah. Unless the fire department thinks otherwise, but, you know, I know we do our own...
It's not gonna be marked at this point, so it is, that is, I mean, that's definitely not something that was ever asked about.
I mean, is that a good project for the Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts? You know, if the, if, you know, if the town or the district supplies the paint, or the Cub Scouts solicit the, the paint.
Like the prisoner syndrome.
You know, huh?
Mr. Chairman?
Right, yeah, Eagle Scout projects, anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, seven, eight months ago, the park committee was able to get some, uh, help from the sheriff's department. If, uh, we contacted the sheriff's department and the paint was supplied, that may be something to consider, to where...
Yeah.
Uh, an officer would escort these four or five men, and give them a sketch of what they want, and you may be able to get, uh, you know, somebody from the sheriff's department in July.
We can't see down in the schools house, July.
Correct. They got a week's vacation coming up, where they coordinate with...
And that depends, too, on their summer program, because sometimes Millville can house this.
Just a thought, and get free help.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. I just said that, I said, get the sheriff's department, well, I said prisoners, but...
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, they've done work there.
Yeah, you're right, the park, that's on the job.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Again, no questions you have for us, anything to take over?
Not, I, I don't, I mean, I know what the, what the roof and all that, tire, tails, so, the hearing, you have the hearing.
I think we just kinda need some, what is, like I, I said earlier, and I saw you jot them down, Steve, so I'm assuming it was regards to that, but, um, you know, a list from the district as to, wha, what is Millville responsible for in the building? I know we had it, I don't know who was at that meeting, but we had a lengthy discussion at one point at MES, I think I was on finance then, um, about the painting and the hardware on the door, and, you know, replacing screws, and, you know, and Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Schaefer was there, and I got a little punchy that night, but, I mean, where is the line? I mean, what are, because, like I said, we don't have a problem doing it, but tell us what needs to be done. Like, if you're not gonna paint anymore on the schools, then, then that's fine. If you're not gonna replace a screw or hardware on a door when it needs replacing, let us know, but we're gonna need access, we're gonna need to know that it's broken, we're gonna need to set up some kind of communication. And, and then when it gets to the bigger items, such as, um, you know, the floor or the, the water system, the tank, and this and that, I mean, who, who's, who's responsible for what? And I just wanna make sure it's equitable to the last zone and complex, that what's, you know, what, what's going on at both towns is equal and, and appropriate. So I think that's, I think that's what we need, and then we can actually budget and plan.
And the same goes for us, too. And, I mean, I hope, I do hope we will take advantage of the March 1st open door, because if, if you look around that building, you will see how pristine it is, and that is all of the custodians' work.
Yep.
They paint every chance they get, they, they beg us to buy the paint, that, you know, they, they, and the building is so clean, you can't tell that it's twenty plus years. And that is all to the credit of the janitors in that building. Um, and they, they do let us know when they need something, or, um, and I, I really do think that beyond these larger projects, you won't find, you know, screws missing or, or hardware issues, or, um, when a problem comes about, they write it to us, and as soon as it can be done, then...
That was a report that we had, and we, at the whole thing, there were some hardware issues.
Right.
And that's why...
But to be fair, was it already fixed?
Right. No.
Or was it not, well, I think...
No, but, but you understand, like, we didn't know.
Right.
And that was the point, like, we, we didn't know that these things were there, we just had made these...
And there are things they're doing every day that we don't even know.
Believe me.
So, I, I know you, but it would be nice if, if people from the community can come in and, and, and just enjoy what we do have in this town, and appreciate it, and the time and energy and the money from our budget that goes into that building. So, we want to see a lot of, a lot of...
Did you get it on cable?
Um, I'm sure we can, we're, we're... And we are, we are looking into having a video, you could run...
But you can run it, um, right to advertise.
Yes, and, and then, um, people can actually access the running scroll through the town's website. So if you don't have cable, you can still access the, um, the scrolling marquee through the town's website. At least last time I went on, it was still working, so...
And we are looking into videotape. Remember a year or two ago, we had the problem with the high school roof, and that was on YouTube and other places, we had, um, Mike walking, and Chip Wood walking around on the roof, and that was very powerful. So we're, we're trying to do the same thing with the walk through, get that running YouTube and any other place we can, for people that can't come on, March 1st, where they can see, see the face of the state of the schools.
And it's what, ten o'clock, step in the middle of the...
Exactly. And then they'll, they'll travel over to JFK and AFM, and do similar walk through there. People will...
Great. Great. Thanks. Right now, our first public forum. Correspondence, we have tonight. No appointments, resignation. Executive Secretary of the Court.
Um, just two quick, uh, things tonight. Um, the chief, um, apologized, he could not make it this evening, but he did want to come to let the board know that they did have a Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting last week, and as of now, his feeling is that, uh, there will be a parade. They are still looking for volunteers, um, but he felt that it went very well, and there is another meeting scheduled for the nineteenth of February. And he said at that meeting, it will, they will likely make a final decision based on attendance that evening, if there will be a parade or not. So that is in progress. And the second issue is, it was brought to my attention this evening, that the building inspector apparently has filed for an extension of time with the BBRS, um, to get his certification. So according to an email I received from, uh, Kim Spencer last week, um, she advised that as long as he requested the extension of time, um, and it's received by their office, um, he would be following the regulation and therefore in compliance. So I'm only going to assume that they've received this in their office, um, and if they have, then he's all set. We would just wait for them to have their meeting, and then they get back to us within ten days. So hopefully by the next Selectmen's meeting, we'll know if his, uh, request has been approved.
Did they meet this week?
Yeah, Wednesday, providing the weather holds up. So, uh, that was it on my report.
Great. All right. Next, the animal control vehicle.
Yep.
How did, how did he make out? Yeah, I know, the other day I saw him, he was headed out to look at that vehicle.
Yep, um, if you recall, we received the one proposal, this was for a two thousand eight Chevrolet Uplander. Uh, with the help of Chief Landry, um, we got this inspected, uh, by a mechanic, by a technician, who outlined for us a few things that were going to need some work. I also, at the board's request, got the blue book value. So the blue book value is ten thousand seven hundred. The approximate, you know, um, dollar amount on the repairs necessary immediately would be about seven hundred dollars, it needs a couple of new tires, and some front brake pads and rotors. Uh, the asking price is ten thousand and thirty-five dollars. Uh, but the animal control officer was, was pleased with the vehicle. Uh, the vehicle is a previous, um, insurance representative's vehicle. I think probably a person who went around and did inspections, perhaps on boilers and, and things like that, because it, it's fit with, um, a ladder rack, and it's got like a metal crate in the back, so it's actually perfect for what we needed for. Uh, the rear seats have already been removed, which we would have had to do anyway, um, and we wouldn't need to install, you know, the dog gate is already a barrier there, so, the vehicle seems like it would work for us. Um, at this point, the board does have the option of negotiating the proposal, so I'll just need to know how you'd like to proceed.
This is from the dealership?
I'm not paying...
This is from Oxbridge, uh, Oxbridge Auto.
You know what, I'm looking at this thing, I say, front right tires are choppy, probably getting these shots. This thing right now will not pass inspection, but from what I can see right now, uh, minor repairs, uh, needs front brakes, rotors, I'm telling you right now, this, this right here, you probably talk to the wall with fifteen hundred dollars, at least. Got front and back brakes, heat hoses, uh, tires, probably need a front end alignment, probably need shocks.
Well, this, this is what, this is the entire report from the technician.
I know.
He went through every, you know, and this is the estimate, the seven hundreds, so I can only give you the information I received.
I understand that, but, you know, I do this for a living, so, but what I see here is more than seven hundred.
I mean, I think when it's coming from a dealership or someone who's selling, they're going to, they should fix all of those things and sell you a car that you're not gonna need to fix anything on. I mean, that's kind of...
That's not the case here, he's giving you ads, the way this is... And I'm telling you right now, John, this will, this will...
Yeah, but that doesn't mean that the person, the person might have not gone through with a fine to, home to look at the rotors, or take the brake pads, or, you know, so, I mean, if we bring to the attention that these are the things, can they be fixed for X number or for the asking, or remove an X number of dollars, I think there, there is some negotiating there.
Yeah. Purchase contingent on those repairs.
Yeah, whether they're repaired or a lower price, so that we can repair them.
Me, if I was buying that vehicle for myself, I'd tell, you know, to, knowing I need, you know, my mechanics are seven hundred, I would tell them, twenty-five hundred off, I'll take it, as is, or make the repairs, and I still want fifteen hundred off.
I mean, is the cost of repairs, the cost of the materials?
They're gonna, they're gonna make us another counter offer, but we gotta hit them hard.
But is the, you know, I mean, is that price of repairs, labor and material, or is it just material?
My understanding, it's both. That's, it was just for the tires and the, the brake pads, the first two items on the list would be the seven hundred, um, because the bottom three items weren't something that needed to be done right away.
Yes, but they're a problem, so they need to be done, or they...
They're a real problem.
No, I'm, I'm, that's just me, if I know there's a small leak and I'm buying a car, then I'm gonna say I want new hoses.
The way, the way it's just right now...
That, that's a small leak in the cooling, yeah, a small leak in the cooling line in the middle of July, when he's going to pick somebody's dead dog up, it's gonna blow. And then we gotta tow it, and then this.
Yeah, no, I, I think everything needs to be fixed, and if everything is fixed, or reduce the price so that we can get it.
Yeah.
I mean...
But like John said, there's fifteen hundred dollars in repairs here. So we should make them a counter offer of twenty-five hundred off, offer that, ten seven.
Look at these car lots, you might get better.
We did, we...
No, we didn't, all we did was we put out for bid war, if you got one bid. What I would do is...
But nobody had, imperial cars, we don't have anything.
There's other car lots around here that they don't even, they don't even put in that's a, I mean, I don't know about you, but I'm pretty sure even for ten grand, you can get yourself a hell of a vehicle.
Oh, you can.
Better than this, one to ten, yeah.
He just needs a van, right?
I mean, if I drove around...
It doesn't need the keys, you need to pick up the chairs, and...
Right.
So you can put in the animals.
If he's got a hack sack type vehicle, that's got, big enough for a deer.
A cage, one cage.
Big enough to throw a deer in, that's about the biggest animal he'd have to pick up.
I mean, it's plenty of used car, you know what I'm saying?
Well, this is where this one came from. It's not a dealer, I mean, it's a small dealership, it's not a Chrysler, it's not a...
Yeah, I mean, we sent to seventeen local dealerships. We can't, we can't just, we can't just ourselves go and look at cars and pick them...
Used, used and new, seventeen used and new dealerships, and that's what we got, one one. Seventeen used and new dealerships, and that's what we got, one, one. I mean, she can, we can't say Helen, stop searching the web, she don't have time.
I know, I understand.
You know? That'll cost us four grand for her to, to save too, you know, we can't.
So it's incumbent upon who to go negotiate with these guys?
Yeah, because, yeah, we have to do it, yeah, but I mean.
Offer them seven grand.
Right. You gotta, you gotta push the stick.
Yeah, we're good, we gotta fix it, so we, yeah.
It's no secret to them, times are hard.
No, like you said, I mean, this is the technician that John said, I mean, I know when I get two, new tires, I've gotta get my car aligned.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's just.
That's another hundred.
That's included in this.
That's another hundred.
There's more here than, than.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't even give them no more, I don't know if I'm gonna move something.
I mean, I can't even make believe I know what it costs to fix a car. I just pay, write the check when I'm told, um, but, I mean, there's, there's, yeah. Either X number of dollars, because we have to do the repairs, or fix it for this amount.
So this was the chief's mechanic, right?
Correct, it's carpcraft.
So let's figure out, ten, ten's about half, huh? We just go there and we say ten is about half, you know, we feel good about this vehicle, we think we're, we're hearing problems, we've kind of gone through.
The technician is correct, the car is moving.
Uxbridge Auto.
Should you make a motion to offer them seven grand, John?
I'll make a motion to offer them seven grand.
Second, all right, all in favor? So he'll come back with a little, he'll want more, obviously, but you gotta go.
That's, that's, I mean, that's a starting point, because of the repairs.
Yeah. Correct.
So if they come back with another number with the fix, then, you know, so this is ongoing.
We can think, we can think about it, depends when he comes back, but I mean, I, I can't see offering any more than that, because.
I don't wanna say nine, and he'll say, okay, yeah, if he, if he agrees real fast, then we know we could've went lower. You know?
I think that's, I think that's what we do.
We'll just, we'll just tell him, look, we don't mean to insult him. But, but we have no money, that's, we totally honest.
Well, it's a starting point.
We have no money.
You're gonna offer, offer them five, he's gonna come back, no matter what we offer, he's gonna come back with.
Yeah.
Or we may end up pulling back.
So, we all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's right, okay, next item, um, well, Memorial Day Parade, I got an, I got an email from Margaret. Um, she, she, she said there will be a parade.
Yes.
Even though the chief said there should be, and I agree with her, there will be.
I, I got a, I got the email also.
Yeah, all right, so.
And she seemed to have everybody, everyone in mind, and, and I think she might have been talking to other people in between the meeting and that email.
And there's some past members that are coming back, and that's what, that's what helped save it, so, there will be a parade, one way or the other. And the American Legion said there'll be a parade, if it's just them walking down the street, there will be a parade.
Done that before too.
Yeah, so, all right, so that.
Your horses will be there?
My horses will be there, we'll be doing, we'll be pulling somebody. Um, pulling a float or whatever, we'll be there, um, all right, so new business, we have a special town meeting warrant.
Um, the only one article on this warrant is the one submitted by the regional school district, typed exactly how they submitted it. Um, it was sent to the school committee as well as the, um, district's attorney, Mr. Gould, for review. And I told them that I needed to know if I closed the business today, if there were any changes necessary, I did not hear anything, so, my assumption is, um, they are fine with this warrant, and I would just need your, um, motion to include signing and duplicate.
I will motion to sign the town meeting warrant. This one's for the elementary school, then you have one for the high school?
The high school's already done deal.
The high school's done, right? So I'll, I'll make the motion to.
This is only for the.
I'm glad we're signing this.
Second.
You only got hit twenty percent of the time, twenty percent worth of time.
The, the high school one is long gone, signed deal.
I understand that, so we'll get it.
Well, now this is a totally different building, so it has to be done totally separately. But we're on our own on this one.
I'm sure you're gonna hit him again.
Cause the elementary school is not technically regionalized.
It's a, I'm assuming, what is it, a twenty year?
Yes, dead ex, yep, dead exclusion for twenty years.
So it's not forever, it's paid off, and then the same with the high schools. Well, when you're as old as you are, it's forever, but not you.
Yeah, all right, so all in favor, sign it, aye?
Aye.
All right, Jennifer, you're on a wall tonight.
I was sick all week, and I've been quiet at home.
Okay, the next, uh, one day liquor license, uh, we have to table it, cause we do not have the signed approval from the police chief yet. So, but it is for, for March first, um, I knew there was something else on March first I had to do.
That's not us.
No. So, it's for, uh, it's, it's for St. Augustine's Parish, um, they're, they're having a, a dinner, and they're gonna be serving beer and wine, but, so we.
Yeah, they have a lot of parties.
We'll tape, yeah, good priest, good priest, lots of parties. And, um, um, so we'll table that for March eighteenth, we have the police chief's paperwork. And. It's a members' forum, all right, this is something I have, it was too late to put it on the agenda, so, I'm just gonna mention something, then, we're gonna put it on the agenda for the eighteenth, of course, we can't make any decisions tonight, seeing it's not on any agenda, but, for the eighteenth, I'd like to put on the agenda, um, as far as our office staff goes, there, there's stretched beyond their limits. Uh, and, and this also goes for Marilyn Matthews. So I think going further, um, if any one of our, the selectmen need any information from the town accountant, from Helen, from the clerk, that's other than personal, you know, for the board, it needs to come to the board's table. We vote on whether, you know, we're gonna have a little vote whether or not this, this information is gonna be dug up by, by Helen, or Marcia, or Lisa, um, or Marilyn, because it's, we're tying up their, their days, their, their, you know, Lisa and Helen, their kind of salary, and they stay until the job's done, and I know the other girls put in extra efforts too, so I'm not saying they don't, but, they're paid hourly, so they're only there from nine to one, and if we tie up their time too much with different requests constantly every day, you know, a few times a week, they're getting backlog, um, so we'll bring it to the board, just as if we would go to, uh, to legal, for a request, although that's for financial reasons why we, you know, we channel it through them. But just to, um, to, to stop pulling them off track of what they're trying to get processed and done. You know, there's lots of things that need to be done, you know, by state, you know, deadlines and stuff like that, so if, just, one, you know, but, everybody think about it in the next two weeks, and maybe we have a better idea than I'm, than I'm proposing, um, but, uh, you know, it's just, it's, it's causing a backlog on, on their.
I would think just a revisit to the, um, chain of command would, um, revisit of who's accountable to who, and the appoint, those that we appoint take direction from us, and another board member, I would say we go through you or through Helen, and if it seems, you know, pertinent and informational, and, and we need that, you know, then, you know, I don't know if someone has to wait two weeks to our next meeting, that's my concern. Someone wants something, they have to wait two weeks, I mean, I think that would be an educated decision between, you know.
Well, I think if one of the.
The people who oversee.
Yeah, but I think if one of the selectmen went up to, say, the secretary at the front desk, and says, look, and when you have a chance with the next day or two, I, I need a, I need some numbers on this. I don't think that's out of line, I think that'd be able to accommodate us, but to get it that day or write that, I think that's a point where, they're in a train of thought, and they're doing certain things, and they have deadlines, I think then it becomes a, a little bit of a hindrance for that.
But I wouldn't think of it as my place, as one of five, to sell someone to do something, to research and find information. If I needed information from Lisa, or the assessors, or even the board of health, I would ask for, you know, especially if it's expensive.
Cause we, yeah.
I mean, I understand, but I'm just saying, I don't.
All right, I just call Helen when I need something, I don't call the other girls.
I usually go to the front, lady at the front, and I ask her.
Well, nowhere around one of the places.
All I call.
But I just feel that we appoint, so we're a full body, so if we direct somebody, it needs to be as a full body.
Right.
And if, in lieu of us taking a vote on something, then it would go through Helen, like, if I say, oh, I really need this information, cause I'm concerned about this, this, and this, do you think we can get that for the next meeting, I'd ask Helen before I'd go to Lisa.
Yeah.
And ask her for that.
Right.
Just because I'm one of five, I don't, it doesn't make me the boss of the building.
Right, exactly, that's kind of where I'm going, too, you know, with the.
And I think that goes out to some of our, you know, people who might be around a lot, or other committees that are looking for information, that, those people are appointed by us, where there are authorities, and that we set that, and that's usually through Helen, based upon need and time, and. Not that we, it's public information, you'll get it, but sometimes it's not readily available, and you have to prioritize.
Yeah, because, I mean, I request information from different towns and cities, and after my check clears, then I get it within ten business days, is what they'll normally say, so, but it could be, so that's two weeks, cause you check, they wait three days for your check to clear, you know, and that's the bigger cities, but I mean, so it's not, we're not, I don't think we're asking too much to give them two or three days to, you know.
Right. But I think if you have five of us, and a few other boards or committee members from town, whether it's the counseling agents, veterans, I mean, look at all the groups we have, centennial, assessors, you know, you have so many, and they're going in and saying, oh, can you do this, can you do this? I mean, that person's gonna be like, well, what do I do and who do I do it for, so I think, you know, it's like, okay, I, you know, if you have a request, then you go through Helen, she's in, in charge when we're not here, and if we have a problem, then as a voting board, we would, you know. But I don't think they should be taking directions or be doing anything based on one person's need for information. Like right in that moment, I'm not saying, like I'm saying, it's all public information, it's there, but technically, if you put in a letter for public information, what is it, fourteen days, ten days?
Ten.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, and we're not looking at that, we're just saying, but I think, I think it probably puts workers in a difficult position, when someone comes in and says to them, I need this. And it's not their direct supervisor. And unfortunately, John, you are not the direct supervisor, so the five of us are, so, no, I'm just saying, for instance, if you come in and ask for something, it's not like, it, it doesn't come, you know what I mean, it doesn't come, cause you gotta ask, and just like that.
I just go in and I ask the lady at the front desk, and then she'll decide who needs to, and then eventually I'll get it, that's the way I do it, I don't go directly to, to Helen or anybody, I just ask.
Is there a procedure, or?
Well, I just figured that's the first.
Would that help a little bit?
Because a lot of times Helen's tied up with something while she's on the phone, I don't wanna bother, I, I realize that, uh, she works for this board, and I, I mean, I understand that, but, I feel more comfortable going to the lady at the front desk and saying, when you have a chance, can you find this information for me, and then she will go to either Lisa, or whoever, and I'll get it in a couple of days, and I'm happy with that, I, I don't need my stuff right away.
I think, I think this discussion has gone far beyond the scope of this, cause it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything. We're not voting, we're not having a discussion, we're not voting on anything. Who for what?
So we got two weeks to think about, plan. Something like that, help out a little, Helen?
Sure.
So final public forum. So now we're gonna do signatures, well, the next regular meeting is February eighteenth, seven P M, Longfellow Municipal Center, and now we'll do signatures, and then after that, we will adjourn. Thank you.